Two minutes to air, one minute to the livestream. Zoom host, please allow council chambers to turn the video on for the Zoom call. One minute to air, the livestream has started.
Good evening, welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by city council and the county Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called so you can make your comments just like in an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, and when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes for a presentation. Each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners, we have to go into our retreat this evening, therefore I ask that each commissioner has five minutes for Q&amp;A and be called upon to speak for a second time when other commissioners have chosen to speak for a first time. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the chair. Commission members, please remember you share your time, this time with your fellow commissioners, keeping your comments, questions pithy, and please don't repeat topics that have already been discussed or questioned. The time to make all public statements is before a motion is made. Once a motion is on the floor, any further discussion regarding that motion must come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Commissioners, if you are not ready to move a case forward, please indicate as such when questioned. Finally, I ask that everyone here and on the Zoom meeting, the commission members, the staff, and the public to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to be muted on the Zoom until such time they regain personal control or to leave the galley. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Cameron.
Here.
Vice Chair Shigares.
Here.
Commissioner Cutright.
Here.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kopack. Commissioner MacGyver.
Here.
Commissioner Valentine. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Woke.
Here.
Thank you. And just to inform the commission, we did get two resignations earlier today. Commissioner Valentine and Commissioner Young submitted their resignations. So, we are sorry to see them go, but I wanted to make sure that the commission was aware.
And we have established a quorum to conduct business.
Yes, we have established quorum. We have nine voting members in attendance.
There are no adjustments to the agenda at this time. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes and the consistency statement from the September 10, 2024 meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to approve the minutes and the consistency statements from the September 10, 2024 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. We'll now move into, we don't have any initial zoning map changes this evening, there's no public hearings to go over that, so we will move directly into the public hearings for zoning map changes. The first case that we have is Z240018, Page/Miami Design District, Place Type Map Amendment and Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, TC24002. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kayla Seibel. I'm a senior planner with the planning department, and I'm here to give a presentation on the Page/Miami Design District rezoning for your recommendation to city council. The Page/Miami Design District is a staff-initiated rezoning, meaning that the city is the applicant, and in this case, the rezoning is for a much larger area than one site. Staff was asked by members of the Joint City-City Planning Committee to take on this effort as part of our work plan for this year. We follow the same procedures as the typical rezonings, you review with additional public engagement methods. So this application is bundled with three formal applications for the district: the Page/Miami Design District zoning, a place type map amendment for some parcels, and a small UDO text amendment. We'll go over all these components in the presentation. For the purposes of the motion, the zoning and place type map could be one motion and the UDO text amendment a separate motion. To orient you, this is an aerial map of the case area. There are about 433 acres in the rezoning located southeast of RTP, Highway 54, Davis Drive, Hobson, Page, and Miami. And we'll zoom in a bit more into this area to give you more context. In general, this area is characterized by tall, multi-story office buildings with large parking lots, hotels, and drive-through, fast food restaurants. In the last 10 years, the western edge along Hobson Road and Davis Drive have been developed with townhomes and multifamily apartments. So if you are familiar with the Topgolf site along I-40, that is a little bit outside the study area but can be seen along I-40. The IQVIA building is one of the tallest along that stretch located here. If you've ever been to a meeting of the Council of Governments or the Durham-Tapewell-Carboro MPO, they have offices along Slater. The Go Triangle building, which is the current Regional Transit Center, is here, a little bit outside the study area. And towards the middle along Miami is a strip mall, Creekstone Crossing. And then to the west side is the Davis Park area where we've seen more residential developments built in recent years. This site is the site of the Future Transit Mobility Hub. It's also right outside the study area. This is where Go Triangle plans to relocate the Regional Transit Center in coordination with Research Triangle Foundation. So finally, the site is bisected, the case area is bisected by the railroad, which as many of you know, has been discussed for future passenger or commuter rail projects. In short, the purpose of this project is to change the area zoning to Compact Suburban Design District, which is one of our zoning districts that encourages denser, walkable, and more mixed-use development. Additionally, the rezoning is one way to implement the comprehensive plan. Also, as the city and county pursue funding for transportation projects, having the zoning in place helps support those efforts as well. In Durham's comprehensive plan, the area is designated as a transit opportunity area. As I mentioned, part of implementing this future vision is through zoning changes that work towards the kinds of development Durham wants to see here. With these zoning changes and future transit infrastructure in this area, this area will serve regional commuters and nearby residents with the ability to walk, bike, or ride the bus in a dense, compact, walkable environment. This area has been thought of for a long time as an important place for regional connectivity. These are snapshots of three initiatives that impact the area: the Regional Transit Center relocation I mentioned earlier, the Triangle Bike Way, and an I-40 study that looks at infrastructure to improve bus connectivity and other projects along I-40. The area includes many different zoning districts: industrial light, industrial park, commercial center, office and institutional, commercial general, mixed-use, residential compact, residential urban multifamily, residential rural. It's a lot of different zoning districts, it's a large area. We'll point this out again, but the properties zoned RCD, RUMD, and this mixed-use with the development plan parcel are not recommended for the zoning change but are in their place type map recommendations. So as you can see, the existing zoning does not allow for dense development, or it requires special approval to build the kind of development that supports walkable neighborhoods in a mix of uses and housing types. However, development has trended towards being denser and more compact as shown in these examples. These were primarily achieved through development plans in the last 10 years, specifically the Triangle Metro Development Plan from 2006 in Davis Park that has been implemented slowly over time. And in case this is helpful, this map is a map of very broad existing land uses. The gray parcels are undeveloped, but there are some entitlements in the Davis Park area. So my point with this slide is that the kinds of development we may see over time is going to be infill on existing parking areas or underutilized parts of properties, or redevelopment of older commercial areas. We see this happening mostly on the eastern portion of the project area. This slide is just extra information to show you where new development or infill development has been in the last 10 years. You can see mostly at the southern end along Page Road and of course Davis Park. The area has few environmentally sensitive features. Much of the existing development either was built a long time ago, before regulations existed, or have already protected streams and wetlands by buffering those areas. So if you can see on the western side Davis Park, that big stream area, there's parcels that buffer this stream from development. Finally, here's the last bit of background info before we get into the proposal. Attachment G has more explanation of existing conditions, including demographics. But we wanted to point out, in terms of affordability, this area does not have any legally binding units, but does have nine units that are indicated to be naturally occurring affordable units. There's a link in your attachment, a really interesting map from the Council of Governments that shows an inventory of affordable units throughout Durham. It is a few years old, so I am unsure if those nine units would still be considered affordable, but just wanted to flag that. So now we're going to switch to the details of the Compact Suburban Design District. As I shared before, staff believes this is the most appropriate zoning district to implement that Transit Opportunity Area place type in the comprehensive plan. There are three sub-districts ranging in intensity of development: Core, Support 1, and Support 2, with different sets of standards for each. The land uses allowed are fairly broad, but the district does not allow for vehicle storage, sales, heavy industrial, or drive-throughs except for banks and pharmacies in the Support When we look at height, here are the standards based on the sub-district. As some of you know, we have an affordable housing density bonus, which allows for an increase in height and density when affordable housing is provided, and there are certain criteria that must be met in the UDO for what counts as affordable housing. I think the big takeaway is that there are many buildings in the area that exist today that reach these heights that are required in the Compact Suburban Design District, but obviously in that core area, the allowable height is taller than what is there now, especially with affordable housing. And this is just another chart showing you the density minimums and maximums. And you can see with affordable housing density bonus, the density is unlimited. Between May and August, we held four neighborhood meetings to share information about the project and inform our proposal. We've attached an engagement summary to your memo and provided an overview of the primary concerns about where development intensity is desired and not desired, as well as the rezoning impact on existing development plans. The concerns that we heard directly influenced the revised proposal and text amendments that we're showing you today. We initially proposed changing the entire Page/Miami case area to Compact Suburban Design District. Based on the neighborhood meetings, survey responses, and discussions with a few property owners, we've revised our proposal. So here's our proposal for the rezoning component, and I will zoom in and walk through each of these. We recommend keeping the majority of the case area as Compact Suburban Design District. Some of the concerns we heard were mostly on the western side. Homeowners shared some uneasiness about residential areas being rezoned to Compact Suburban Design, so we have adjusted our recommendations to RC and RSM, which I will zoom in as well on the next slide. And then the neighbors near Finsbury Street, which is that northwest corner of the case area, were concerned that this rezoning would eliminate the development plan for these two mixed-use parcels here, especially the ground-floor retail that they're really looking forward to. So that's why those three areas are not included in changing the zoning. The developer of one vacant site along Corbett Street has a retail project in progress that meets the standards of the existing zoning district with the development plan, but would not meet the standards of the Compact Suburban Design, so we have a proposal for that property as well. Zooming in a bit, because I know this is more complicated than we initially envisioned for this project. The Compact Suburban Design District Core is set alongside I-40 in the northern part of this area, primarily because of its proximity to RTP and seem to be more desired by residents that more development intensity occur over here. To the south, this is our Compact Suburban Design District Support 1, with more flexibility for drive-throughs for pharmacies and banks, so that's where we drew the line between the Core and the Support 1. On the west side, we're leaving the MUD, RCD, and RUMD zoning for Finsbury and Davis Park West. We're not including that in the zoning change, however, they are included in our place type map amendment. And then this RC and RSM areas, these reflect the current land uses in Davis Park that will be unlikely to change over time. They're fairly recently built townhomes, if not brand-new. So in order to clean up that zoning, right now it's office and institutional, we are recommending a more appropriate zoning district that reflects what's there now. It will probably continue to be there for a very long time. And then this is the text-only development plan that we have in the proposal for this parcel along Corbett Street, and we'll discuss the details of the textual development plan. So we've recommended textual development plan for this parcel. The property owner wants to pursue a retail project at this corner, and like I said, the project is consistent with the current Davis Park development plan, but would not be consistent with our recommended Compact Suburban Design District. So we believe that the project is consistent with the intent behind the comprehensive plan in allowing neighborhood services, modest-scale retail close to neighborhoods, so people can access the things they need by foot or bike. And so that's why we're recommending CN, the commercial neighborhood, with a development plan for this parcel. We are prohibiting some uses with the development plan agricultural, single-family residential, and convenience store with gasoline sales, which we believe are not consistent with the vision. So the revised proposal required some adjustments to our place type map shown here. The dark purple parcels have changed from Transit Opportunity Area to Mixed Use Neighborhood, and that one parcel with the textual development plan as Neighborhood Services. We believe that the adjustments still generally match the intent behind designating this area a Transit Opportunity Area. We have just had the opportunity to look at this in more detail and heard feedback, very specific feedback from residents that informed this place type change. We also found two small text changes to the UDO. Since the Patterson Place Design District was designated in 2019, this Page/Miami Design District would only be the second one in Durham where we're applying this CSD. So while looking at the Page/Miami area in context, we recommend two technical text amendments, one for sign standards so folks know which calculation for sign area to use in the Compact Suburban Design District, and one for the TUA major special use permit, where you're clarifying that it applies in the Patterson Place Design District and not the Page/Miami. So as we've gone through this process, hearing from residents, we've met individually with management companies and developers who've had many conversations about specific parcels, and some of these requests came in at different parts of the process, but we wanted to call attention to three parcels that, based on your feedback, could change the proposal. I'll walk through them one by one, and we're interested in hearing your recommendation for changing any of these. The first one on the far left, this is Davis Park Pod G. This is an already entitled site. They have an approved site plan. They are concerned that they would not develop before the site plan expires, and when it expires, then they would be subject to our new zoning district, which would be RC for that property. So we, staff advised the team to seek a vested rights determination to extend their site plan expiration date, and I believe they have already started that process and are scheduled to go to council around December. So just flagging that, not yet resolved, but there is a path forward for Pod G. The middle property is, along Miami Boulevard is a family fair, convenience store, and gas station. The property owner asked to be removed from this as the Compact Suburban Design District would mean that their gas station would be a non-conforming use. And there are two other gas stations in the area, so it would apply to them as well, and there's a number of uses that would be, well, not uses, but a number of non-conforming issues that would need to be worked through. We talked to JCCPC about this very briefly last month, and we heard interest in keeping all the existing gas stations within our proposal and going ahead with the rezoning. And then finally, 902 Slater Road. This is a little bit outside the study area. A management company asked to include that in our rezoning. We talked through the specifics, and I think we could consider bringing it in. It would just mean that we need to adjust the project boundary and do another neighborhood meeting and neighborhood notice because things would have changed. So that's just a detail there. So if y'all are interested in keeping any of those in, it would also mean just starting the process, not completely over, but starting with a lot of administrative things we'd already done. And then one other alternative here. So we've heard that the density limits of the Compact Suburban Design District are too limiting for what folks want to do in the district. The other option we could consider is the Compact Design District. I know they all sound the same. It's the CD District, which is only found in 9th Street right now. So here's the density comparison. So here's the red. This is our Compact Suburban Design District, showed this earlier. And then compared to the CD District, the minimum density requirements are the same, but the maximum is, at least in the Core, and the Support 1 is almost doubled. So that would be, again, if folks are interested, if the Planning Commission is interested in us pursuing this, let us know. This is an option for the area. So with that, after we hear your recommendation tonight, we are scheduled to appear at the January City Council meeting for a decision. And that concludes the presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing to hear from any community members. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Pick up a sign option. Thank you. We have Mr. Frank Quinn. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. You have two minutes.
Should I go? My name is Frank Quinn. I'm a commercial real estate advisor with APG Companies located in Raleigh, North Carolina. For the last 10 years, I've been the lead marketing, have led the marketing team on a property called Davis Park East. It's at the corner of Hobson and Davis Drive. The parcel I'm to speak with today is what we call nomenclature Pod A. It's at the intersection of Marion Drive and Davis. It's a 7.4, 7.5 acre parcel. Under the current O&amp;I zoning, we have taken the property to all your product groups: hospitality, retail, office, and certainly multifamily. There are some severe development challenges to the property. Of the 7.4 acres, 7.5 acres, barely half of it is developable. It is surrounded by creeks, no visibility off of Davis Road, and anybody to develop that it turns into be a triangle now would have to put 15 to 25-foot retaining walls surrounding the property except for the small window on Marion Drive. We've gone after, the density would be, someone has to do structured parking, complete walled, reinforcing the soils and so forth like that. We've taken it to all of the product groups: hospitality, severe economic cost of structured parking, and dealing with all the environments. We've been turned away. Additionally, the hospitality group, as you know, wants to be by Page Road. My recommendation would be for multifamily, medium residential, that's compatible, consistent with a very vibrant community of Davis Park East.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Harvey Patel.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cameron, Vice Chair Shigares. Pardon me if I pronounced that.
wrong, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Harvey Patel, and I'm the proud franchise owner of the Family Fair Convenience Store located at 5202 South Miami Boulevard and the corner of NC 54. Give me, give me a brief about me. I grew up in India and immigrated in the United States in 2010. I arrived with just, you know, a few dollars in my pocket, backpack, and a snap mic on my belongings. I began working as a cashier for a corporately-owned convenience store, and through my hard work and perseverance, I worked my way up, became a district manager, and then about a few years ago, about seven, eight years ago, I heard an opportunity of, you know, having a business with Family Fair Convenience Store. So I started working as a manager in one of the franchise store, saved everything I could, and in 2021, I bought this property, which I'm, you know, working on it, business, doing business at 5202 South Miami Boulevard, and it cost me to, it cost me $110,000 to buy that franchise store, you know, and my wife, she works as a client service representative in a Duke Hospital. So most of her check goes towards the insurance, medical insurance. I have my 78, 70-year-old mom and dad, which I have to take care of them because they live with me. And, you know, this parcel basically is only .65 acres, which, you know, is surrounded by a family cemetery and two state-maintained major highways. I don't think that use of suggested rezoning are realistic based upon the size and the topography using, adjacent to my store. I'm terrified about this rezoning since I'm losing this commercial neighborhood zoning that makes my business legal. We have all seen the devastation in Rocky Mount and Asheville a couple of weeks ago. If something like this happens to my property, you know, my, my whole life saving is gone, and I have nowhere to go. Please reconsider this and, you know, take it out of this rezoning. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Craig Carter.
Hello. Thank you so much for your time. I have some pictures that I would like to share today. It's gonna pop up on the screen.
Do you need assistance?
There we go. Okay, there we go. So yes, my name is Craig Carter. I am a resident at 300 Finsbury in the Davis Park. I wanted to talk about the parcel of land. I've circled it in pen up there. So yeah, I, this parcel of land has just been, you know, flat land, overgrown grass for the entire time I've lived there, many, many years. So I would love to see this be developed and, and take any, take any rezoning, whether it's getting rid of parking minimums, whatever it would take to have some, some nice retail there and potentially residential. Another thing, as you're developing, I would love to get away from this kind of cookie cutter design that has spread all over this country. I was looking at some more modern construction that is still brick and still beautiful. I would love to see more of this style, not only in our area, but Durham as a whole. One, also, the, where the pin is, that's where I live, I would say, I would love to see short-term rentals eliminated. We have a lot of owners of apartments that are doing Airbnbs and short-term rentals, so we have a lot of turnover, and that's created a lot of safety issues and some criminal issues. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jeff Glenn.
Hello, Jeff Glenn with Northmark. I'm a Raleigh native, but I, I grew up in Durham. In fact, my family has very long roots in what we call the Nelson Community, which is right there on Miami Boulevard. Have family members that are buried in that cemetery you referenced. But I'm here today, representing owners within Central Park, which is that, one of the gray areas that is closest to I-40. In attendance, we have a couple of owners that, that are here that are supporting the, the efforts of the Planning Commission and staff to push forward this compact zoning and to allow for a mix of uses. So Mr. Tier, Rob Tier, who's an original developer of Central Parks in attendance, Dan Jewell, Thomas and Hutton, a couple of other, Morley and others that are stakeholders within Central Park that are all in approval of this. And, and to your point, I think the, and also I forgot to mention Phil Sossack, Architect. So the entire development team is here in support of this rezoning. Mr. Tier's owned this for 40 years, and as you've seen, the development of this portion of Durham is mostly suburban offices, some high-rise offices, and just now the advent of more residential. And so this rezoning is going to allow for a mix of uses and a more pedestrian-oriented development. We're in agreement with you. The form-based zoning does allow for a more compact design, and hopefully that aids to greater walkability. So just wanted to say thank you and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Laura Holloman.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Laura Holloman, and I'm a land planner with McAdams located at 2905 Meridian Parkway here in Durham. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of my client, Research Triangle LTD, who owns approximately seven and a half acres at 353 Davis Drive and is greatly affected by this city's zoning proposal. Frank Quinn also spoke on behalf of this parcel earlier. The property owner is not opposed to the city's vision initiative. In fact, it's been heavily involved with Davis Park East, which they have already contributed to this section of Durham, transforming and continuing to transform it into a live, work, and play atmosphere. They simply want to be set up for development success. The subject site has significant developmental challenges. It is triangular in shape with its south boundary fronting on Marion Drive, and its east and west sides being bounded by creeks, which are, of course, regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. This equates less than 50% of the site being not developable, three and a half acres to be exact. What does this mean? Well, it means that if it is, if it is zoned by the city to CSD S1, that carries a minimum required density of 16 units per acre. That is simply not achievable on this property. I can tell you that because the property owner proactively reached out to McAdams, and we studied it from a land planning perspective. We can fit closer to eight dwelling units an acre. It makes sense because only half of the site is developable. With that said, we would like to formally request the property to be rezoned to RUM. This would be in harmony with the Finsbury across Davis Drive from us and allow us to develop the site realistically, and more importantly, working with the environment rather than against it. I greatly appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Michael Birch.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners, 4509 Creedmoor Road. Here on behalf of the owners, developers of Imperial Center, they also manage a number of the properties within Imperial Center. As you all may be familiar, this area is largely built out with existing buildings. So we were primarily concerned about understanding how this new zoning district, new standards would affect the existing buildings in terms of creating nonconformities, our ability to make changes to the buildings to adapt, et cetera. So I do want to thank Kayla, Scott, and Beau for working with us to kind of help us better understand what the limitations will be, the avenues for addressing those issues that would be caused by the new standards. And as we continue to work with them, we get more and more comfortable about the rezoning. I do want to reiterate, one of the things that Kayla mentioned towards the end of her presentation about a comment related to seeking that increased density that was, is allowed in the CD district today, and having that apply to this area. You know, the goal of this city-initiated rezoning is to kind of facilitate redevelopment in a more mixed-use pattern. But at the densities that are currently proposed for a place like Imperial Center, it doesn't make sense at those densities to redevelop those existing buildings. Someone would still have to go through and initiate their own rezoning case. That's time, money, uncertainty, that is really just kind of promotes the status quo. And so if the desire is to see kind of real change, more of a mixed-use pattern out here, we would very much encourage the Commission to recommend those densities in the CD district for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rob Griffin.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Rob Griffin with Tri Properties Durham, North Carolina. Represent members of the Imperial Center ownership and Properties Owners Association. I'd like to mirror what Michael said about the cooperation and overall helpfulness of, of your planning staff, Kayla, Scott, Beau, their availability, incessant questions we threw at them to help us get comfortable. So thank you. Great job. Overall, we're in support of the rezoning. I would further the, the comment about the density that was brought up. The densities really are more suburban densities. If the, the goal here is to have a more urban feel, a denser environment, 21 units an acre is a suburban density from a development standpoint, and which is what I do. You're going to see a minimum of 220 to 240 from a unit count for most developers who want to pursue an apartment complex. This currently is a surface park market. The economics don't support structured parking yet. It may change in the future as this develops out. So if you just kind of take that out, you're going to need over a 10-acre parcel to get to that 220 to 240 minimum that a developer needs unless you move to a more dense, you know, category, or, or allow more density within the CSD zoning districts. Because most of these parcels between Central Park, Imperial Center, they may be four to six acres. You know, our 150,000 square foot office buildings own eight acres. It won't support the kind of density that a developer would want to pursue redevelopment for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dan Jewell.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dan Jewell. I appreciate Mr. Glenn's shout-out a few minutes ago. I'd like to speak also, though, as a, as a citizen of Durham, as a landscape architect, land planner, who has been working on land use issues in Durham since 1985 now. And I would like to say I wholeheartedly support this proposal. I know there's details to be worked out, but I think it's an extraordinary thing that the city and the Planning Department have taken the initiative to look at rezoning this, this entire area into a compact suburban design form bit district, which we've done many projects in before. This is a, a part of Durham that, for the last 40 years, has developed out in a very suburban pattern. It, it, it met the needs of the time, and there's nobody who's going to be forced to redevelop anything right now. But to be characterized by buildings set far back from the street, surrounded by large parking lots, large landscape buffers in between uses, and large parcels, is just sort of the antithesis of what's called for in the recently adopted comprehensive plan. And that is that we have buildings closer to the street, we have connectivity between parcels, and we, we design and build buildings in such a way with ground floor transparency and uses that makes the walking experience and the biking experience much more lively than it is today. It's, it's how we need this area to grow, particularly since we're adjacent to RTP in the airport, and most importantly, that triangle, the proposed Triangle Metro Center Transit Station is within this district. So with what's being proposed, we, we think, we hope, I will work hard to make sure that folks who live and work in this area and shop in this area start thinking that there are alternatives to just automatically thinking they need to jump in their car to get around and go places. And that's why this district is so important. So I would wholeheartedly ask you to recommend approval to the City Council of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the galley wishing to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this case? If so, please use the raise your hand function, or if you've called in, please hit star nine. None. Alrighty, I am, the chair now closes the public hearing, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. I guess the, anyone before I start? No? Do you want to, I, I wanted the, the staff to address the first two concerns from the first two speakers.
Sure. Let me, so that Pod A parcel is constrained on the map. You could see the, the stream was kind of outlining, so that is a constrained parcel. I think staff would be in support of the RUM zoning district if y'all agree.
Okay. And the, the second speaker regarding commercial neighborhood zoning?
Can you say that, sorry, one more?
Excuse me?
Can you say that one more time?
The second speaker that was concerned with his commercial neighborhood zoning?
Oh, the Family Fair gas station. That's one of the, the alternatives we mentioned, a gas station that would be a non-conforming use. There's some information in our UDO about non-conforming structures. If more than 51% is destroyed, they cannot rebuild the use. But in general, they would be restricted to, from expanding the nonconformity or doing anything to increase the nonconformity on that site. They could still continue, but until they reach that 51%, that's where that, that issue would, would present itself. And then when we mentioned this at JCCPC, they point that guided staff to keep that property in.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
First of all, thank you for your comprehensive layout of this project because it's felt like a lot of pieces that were trying to come together. So a couple of general questions, because I'm not, I can't figure out who I'd ask. One is the density question, more density. We have existing housing that has been built over the last, say, five years, and the density didn't seem to be an issue in terms of continuing to build to the mixed-use, commercial. So can you give me a perspective of why the density would be an issue today with the proposal?
Yeah, so the densities that a lot of the developments have developed under were the Triangle Metro Development Plan that allowed certain amount of density. So it is, I think, in general, more dense than what we have in the compact suburban design district. And the reason for that is to get the bonus, or folks have to provide the affordable housing so they can build more, more densely. So, did y'all want to add any more? Scott's gonna add some more context.
Good evening. I'm Scott Whiteman with the Planning Department. When the, the CSD district was developed, when we were working in the Patterson Place area, we do, we acknowledge the densities are fairly low, but they were, they were developed fairly low to create a strong encouragement to use the affordable housing density bonus. So the CSD has one of our more, it's probably our most aggressive affordable housing density bonus of any zoning district. So I guess that is, that's kind of the, the tension here, that the base densities are fairly low, but they're very high if you provide the minimum amount of affordable housing, where the CD district, which was developed quite, quite a while before that, does allow higher densities by right. So it's really a, it's kind of a policy choice of, do you want the higher densities by right or the higher densities with the provision of affordable housing?
And to clarify, these would And to clarify, these would be with the provision of affordable housing?
That's right. The densities that Kayla showed under chart were the ones that are without affordable housing. In all the C S D districts, if you provide 15% affordable units, then there is no density limit.
And then to follow up on the chair's, as I understood it, there were options that were laid out by the planning group. An option, for example, for the gas station to be excluded and retain its current right. Would that address the gentleman's issue that he raised today?
Yes, the request was to remove, the property owner requested to remove that parcel from the district.
And remembering the questions I saw from the community, there was concerns about the transit center affecting not only noise, but property values, which I think it's good to have a transit center, but property values, noise, light. Can you address, have those been adjudicated or are they still out there? And what should that relevance be?
Yeah, during our community meetings, folks in the Davis Park area who are closest to that Transit Center expressed concerns about proximity to the station and what impacts that would be. So we've been talking with our Research Triangle Foundation planners about that. What would impacts be? What kind of design level are they at? And they're not at any design level yet, but they just have an agreement right now with Go Triangle that that is the site they want to look at. They've also set a desire for a mixed-use component to the Transit Center. So they wanted to make clear to us, the planners, that their interest is not just for it to be a transit station, but that it would also have some residential retail component to it. But as far as addressing concerns that folks may have, staff doesn't have any, the planning process for that property hasn't gotten far enough to, for us to have any solutions.
So would it be fair to say, though, in the development stage of the Transit Center, those factors would be looked at?
Yes.
And possibly have some avenues to mitigate?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioners have questions? None? Are we ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion, please?
Chair, as it relates to case Z 2400018, Page Miami Design District, and place type map amendment, I make a recommendation that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move case Z 2400018, Page slash Miami Design District, place type map amendment and unified development ordinance text amendment, T C 244002, forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to ask you to take this as two separate votes.
Okay. After all that, why are you shouting?
One for the zoning and one for the text amendment. So if we.
All right, can we do all the?
Zoning first, and then we'll do the text amendment second.
All right, so may I have a motion to move the zoning case forward?
Chair, as it relates to zoning case Z 2400018, Page Miami Design District. Make a recommendation we move that case forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move zoning case Z 244018, Page Miami Design District, forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner McIver.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
Chair, make a motion that we move place type map amendment and U D O text amendment, T C 2400002, forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutwright and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move place type map amendment and U D O text amendment, T C 244002, forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner McIver.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Just briefly, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that Commissioner Copac has an excused absence for today. All right, moving forward with zoning map change, Z 244014 Hillsborough Road Commercial. May we have the staff report, please? I'm going to wait one second while they move out. All right.
Good evening, Sarah Long, Senior Planner of the City County Planning. I'm here to present on Z 2414 Hillsborough Road Commercial. Patrick Biker of Morningstar Law Group proposes to change zoning designation of one portion, of a portion of one parcel of land totaling 0.5 acres and located at 2504 Hillsborough Road. The current zoning is compact design support two, C D S two. The applicant proposes to change the designation to commercial infill with a textual development plan to allow all uses in the C I district except nightclub, bar, or payday lender. The proposal area is currently designated Transit Opportunity Area on the place type map and does not have any zoning overlays. So again, the existing zoning is compact design support two, and the proposal is to change to commercial infill. So the back portion of this site is residential urban five, as you can see in the light brown. However, that portion of the parcel is not part of the zoning map change application and will remain the same. The site is surrounded by residential urban five, commercial general, and compact design support two. The aerial map shows the general location of the project, which is northwest of downtown Durham. And again, the property is currently designated Transit Opportunity Area on the place type map. The proposal was determined to be consistent with the designated place type. The proposal makes a textual commitment to not allow nightclub, bar, or payday lending uses. And there were two neighborhood meetings, which were held in accordance with the U D O requirements. The first on November 10th, 2023, where one community member attended, and the final on September 19th, 2024, where one community member attended. So the proposal would change zoning designation of 0.5 acres to commercial infill for development plan. The site's current use is vehicle service minor, and it's centrally located close to downtown Durham on the Ninth Street compact neighborhood area. Again, the applicant commits to not having a nightclub, bar, or payday lender uses. And the proposed zoning district commercial infill is generally consistent with the place type designation of Transit Opportunity Area. So just as a note, a correction to the staff report, in the second paragraph of the executive summary, it should read that the commercial infill district is consistent with the T O A place type, as it states in the conclusion. So thank you, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing, and I see the applicant is already at the podium. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeris, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Patrick Biker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group. I'm here tonight representing Chapel Hill Tire, along with its president, Mr. Mark Pons, and their director of marketing, Kim Florick. Chapel Hill Tire is the relatively new owner of this tire and vehicle repair shop located at 2504 Hillsborough Road that you see on this slide. Chapel Hill Tire bought this building on May 11, 2023, and the building was built in 1985, so it's 39 years old, and it's in need of significant improvements. However, I do need to emphasize at the outset that Chapel Hill Tire will not be expanding the building footprint nor the building height. What you see in this picture regarding its size and height will remain unchanged. Unfortunately, the need to convert the storage area in the back into a couple of new service bays ran afoul of the permitted uses in the Compact Design Support Two zoning district. To give a little background on that, and you certainly had plenty of background on it with the previous agenda item, I think about 15 years ago, it was that the city initiated the process that you were working on just a minute ago, initiated a similar process for the Compact Design zoning map change for this area around Duke East Campus. It went from Duke East Campus on the east all the way to Trent Drive on the west, and then along Hillsborough Road south to the Durham Freeway. Now Trent Drive is only one block west of Chapel Hill Tire, and everything along Hillsborough Road from Trent Drive to Hillendale is zoned commercial general or industrial light. In other words, if we were just one block further west, we would be zoned commercial, and we would not be here tonight. 15 years ago, I recall that I was fully in support of the Compact Design District since we thought it would be helpful in supporting the light rail line planned from Durham to Chapel Hill. Well, that didn't work out. And now, due to the preclusion of vehicle service minor in the Compact Design District, we need to ask for the commercial infill zoning district with a text-only development plan to allow Chapel Hill Tire to move forward with the necessary improvements to this 39-year-old building. These improvements are necessary because Chapel Hill Tire has been very successful since opening here just over a year ago. In fact, Chapel Hill Tire Store on Hillsborough Road was voted one of the best five auto repair establishments in Durham by Durham Magazine. To better serve its customers, Chapel Hill Tire needs to increase the service base from the existing six to a total of eight. And to try be a good, in order to try to be a good neighbor, we did have two neighborhood meetings, we sent out over 200 letters. My longtime friend, John Wood, was the only person who attended the meeting on September 19, and we certainly want to apologize upfront if there's any misunderstanding about the scope of the improvements needed for this building with the garage doors, I'm sorry, with the service base on Rosehill Avenue. So in regard to the building modifications that we want to implement through this rezoning, here's the view of the side of the building along Rosehill Avenue where the two service bays would be located. And so if you're standing here where those two new service bays would be, and you look across Rosehill Avenue, this is what you would see. Now, while these appear to be residential structures, this parcel is actually zoned commercial general with no development plan. So that property could be a tobacco shop, like the one around the corner, or it could be a payday lender, just to give the Planning Commission examples of what's permitted by right in the commercial general zone. Next, I want to emphasize that the 39-year-old parking area that's at the existing store, that landscaping needs to be improved. Here's the Chapel Hill Tire Store at 4805 Hope Valley Road. Part of the improvements for the Hillsborough Road site will include significant landscaping improvements, as noted in your staff report pursuant to Comprehensive Plan Policies 39 and 94. There also will be a new U D O compliance sign, like the one that you see here. In addition, I'd be remiss if I did not point out that Durham County Stormwater and Erosion Control Division has been very pleased with the steps Chapel Hill Tire has taken to clean up pollution that was caused by the prior owner. Lastly, this building has a pretty antiquated customer waiting area. On the right hand of this slide, you can see the customer's path to the restrooms in the existing building. In addition to the two additional service bays that I mentioned a minute ago, that will speed up the services customers receive, the new waiting area will be a major improvement as well. With new customers, the new customer waiting area looking something like this. In closing, in my experience, I understand there's a petition from folks who live in the area opposed to this. Typically, that's what the Planning Commission receives. I'm happy to report tonight that we have a petition with around 280 signatures on it in support of this rezoning. If my assistant, Brandon Foster, may share those with the Planning Commission, I hope you will consider that. Brandon, if you could pass those out. It's nice, I'm sorry, let me introduce my colleague, Brandon Foster from Morningstar Law Group. I hope the Planning Commission will consider that the Chapel Hill Tire enjoys broad community support, and it has, it is, you know, certainly achieved commercial success, as evidenced by the Best of Durham Award. I realize this is a difficult situation, where you've got older establishments next to established neighborhoods. And again, I want to emphasize that Chapel Hill Tire wants to be a good neighbor, and they've been that ever since they started their business shortly after World War II. Members of the Planning Commission, our team will be happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully ask for your approval. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. At this time, if there, do we have a signing sheet for this? Hillsborough, right. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to call the community members. John Wood, any additional?
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name's John Wood. I live at 2406 Green Street. It's about a block from the site. I'm also a member of the Old West Durham Neighborhood Association. I'm on the board there. I'm also a landscape architect, having practiced in the community for, since 1986. On the screen, this is a overall aerial showing the context of the existing conditions relative to the neighborhood. The building currently functions in a good way, in that it kind of buffers the noise, the views, and the negative aspects of the facility from the neighborhood. It focuses it more out onto Hillsborough Road. When you zoom in on most of the images of the site, you see it's usually pretty crowded during business operational hours, with a fair amount of circulation traffic with the six bays that currently exist in both the G I S mapping and the Google mapping. The addition of another bay, two bays, would be a concern in terms of overall traffic and the amount of traffic that would have to circulate back and forth between the parking lot and out onto the street into the remote bays, which would be located on that tall portion of the building. Currently, the area is, has several curb cuts that occupy space in the right-of-way of where we normally, if this was a new project, you'd have sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity, street trees, and plantings. And this would be the view opened up from the service base to the community, allowing for noise and traffic to extend to that area.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have Lauren Page.
I'm Lauren Page. I live at 2308 Desern Place, about a block from the property. I'm primarily here to relay the position of the Old West Durham Neighborhood Association. The Board recently voted to oppose the rezoning application in its current form. Until this weekend, the Board had been noncommittal, but when they learned less than a week ago of a new auto repair base that would be added and face out on Rosehill. of a new auto repair base that would be added and face out on Rosehill, opposition quickly galvanized. They voted unanimously Monday with one absence and no one in favor to oppose the zoning plan in its current form. The Old West Durham Neighborhood has a long history of working cooperatively with neighborhood merchants and supporting local businesses. Back in the day, we worked cooperatively with the city and Ninth Street merchants to develop standards that have been quite successful for Ninth Street and the surrounding areas. We have always welcomed a thriving business community and have participated in the development of standards that are good for both our merchants and for the surrounding neighbors. This is an interesting case since the existing use on auto repair facility is in nonconformance with its current zoning and with the comprehensive plan. The business is grandfathered in, and no one is suggesting that they be encouraged to leave, but that does not mean they should be allowed to significantly expand their nonconforming use. Such an expansion would have all kinds of negative effects on the neighborhood. Liz Wilderman, who lives on Rosehill, just a few doors down from the business, will talk next about expected impacts of this proposal. Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Wilderman.
Thank you. I'm Liz Wilderman, 811 Rosehill Avenue, which is right where the shop is. I'm going to read the petition that everyone on the block signed, minus a couple of people, all the neighbors primarily. Let me put my glasses on. "We, the underside residing on the 800 block of Rosehill Avenue, are very concerned about the effect that the rezoning and renovation of Chapel Hill Tire will have on our neighborhood. We recently discovered that although the company indicated there would be no impact on the neighborhood, there is a plan to have two bays that will be facing our street. At this point, the noise that is produced by the present bays are facing the traffic to Hillsborough Road. We all agree that having those bays facing Rosehill, however, will have a very negative impact on our homes. For those of us who live behind Chapel Hill Tire, the noise will be significant. For those of us who live across Rosehill from the shop, not only will the noise pollution be an issue, but it will be an eyesore as well. We also have concerns about the probable increase in street parking. We don't object to renovation, but we do vehemently object to having the noise and visual effects of the open bays on Rosehill Avenue. We urge the planning committee to reject the request for zoning as it stands at this point." And I just want to, that's the petition. I just want to say, as a person who has lived on that street for over 30 years, and I'm hoping to age there, I really am very, very concerned about the value of my property because of what, of the noise pollution and the effects that that all will have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Welch.
Good evening. My name is Dan Welch. I live at 923 Alabama Avenue. I'm just a short distance from the Chapel Hill Tire Shop. Since I'm directly behind the NTB Tire Shop, which is right behind my house, you know, I hear the air wrenches and air compressors and clinging tools all day long, six days a week. It's really loud, and that's with the shops facing out away from my backyard. I can only imagine what it would be like to have open bays coming out onto the street where I live as the people from Rosehill Drive, Rosehill Avenue are going to have to face with or would have to face with. But I'm up here to recap the position of the neighbors that we've spoken with. The applicant is asking the city and its residents to accept a rezoning to upgrade and refurnish their facilities. It appears there would be no significant pushback if upgrading and refurbishing their offices and storefront is all that is proposed. But the applicant's also asking for the ability to expand their nonconforming auto repair facilities by 33% from six bays to eight bays. Every neighbor we have spoken with finds this unacceptable. Such an expansion is in direct conflict with the current compact design zoning, which is why we're here today. It's also in conflict with the comprehensive plan, and to make matters worse, this rezoning request would permanently codify the ability to bring in a myriad of other uses that are not considered appropriate for this location. And why do I say they're inappropriate? Well, our zoning plans and the comprehensive plan clearly indicate as much. Wouldn't it be crazy to throw these plans out the window simply to allow for the expansion of a nonconforming use? I mean, we're kind of moving heaven and earth to allow for the expansion of something that is nonconforming. So while we support the ability of this business to upgrade their offices and their storefronts and so forth, we strongly oppose their plan to expand the auto repair capacity. There are tools available, such as a rezoning with a carefully designed development plan, and so those tools are available, and we ask that you say no to this in its current forms, that we can go back and negotiate something that will work for
Thank you, sir.
the neighborhood and the community.
Next, we have Liz Morris.
Good evening. My name is Liz Morris. I live at 608 Dowd Street. I've lived in Durham since 2016. I grew up in Chapel Hill and own a business in Hillsborough. As a small business owner, I strongly believe in supporting other local businesses, which is why I'm here to support the rezoning request for Chapel Hill Tire. I've been a loyal customer of theirs for years, and my parents took their cars to the Chapel Hill Tire near University Mall when I was growing up. The rezoning will allow Chapel Hill Tire to add two bays without expanding the current footprint. This will reduce wait times and increase the number of appointments they can take each day. Through optimizing their current site, they will better meet the demand in our neighborhood. And lastly, supporting business growth will help retain and add new local jobs while contributing more to the city's tax base, which benefits the community as a whole. So as a small business owner and a neighbor, I see this as a valuable opportunity for our community, and I fully support it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Alicia Par.
Hello, I'm Alicia Par, and I live at 2 Dreggs Way Court in Durham. And I've lived in Durham since 2000, and it has just really thrived and grown, and I love that. And with that in mind, I see Chapel Hill Tire, where I've gone and taken my car for as long as I found them, they are good neighbors. You know, I've gotten to know a lot of the team, the auto repair. When I think of an auto repair shop, very often the first thing in my mind and maybe a lot of people's minds is the noise. You think dirty. You think a lot of things. But when I look at any Chapel Hill Tire location, the way it's run, the way the people act, the way that they're neighborly, it's just a completely different story. So I just wanted to share that, my experience with that, and that I see businesses, and I'm a small business owner myself. When I see small businesses that are really trying to be neighborly and do the right things, and really bring kind of the really, the warmth that we all want to have with each other and really feel a neighborly feeling, you're going to get that with Chapel Hill Tire. And so just because they're from the next town over, you know, they're great neighbors. They're great people, and they will take care of, you know, everyone, not just customers, but the actual location as well. So I think that you would find that, and thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone left in the galley wishing to speak? Did you already speak, ma'am? Okay, you can come and submit it, or submit it to staff. Do we have, we have Michael Bacon on the Zoom that would like to speak?
Making dinner. I'm a little distracted. My name is Michael Bacon. I live at 912 Rosehill Avenue. I was actually born just next to road to northwest Durham. I don't know, are you all here?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Just got some messages on my screen. Make sure I wasn't messing up. All right. I live at 912 Rosehill Avenue, just up the street from the location. I've already submitted a comment, so this should be an amendment to that, because at that time I submitted the comment. I had not seen the detail about the bays going out onto the street. I'll repeat, my primary concern is the abutment of Elleby Creek, a branch of Elleby Creek, a major contributor to sort of where South Elleby Creek forms in our neighborhood, runs directly past the site. Those parking lots are already, with the existing six bays, are already heavily used for car storage and for sort of, you know, cars that are waiting to be repaired or that have been repaired. With the additional increase, the only thing that's going to happen is they're either going to continue to use those parking lots more heavily, leading to the pollution upstream, or they're going to spill out and be on Rosehill Avenue. Additionally, Rosehill Avenue is our walk route to get to our bus stop. Having additional bays coming out there, that's, there are no sidewalks on Rosehill, as you've probably noticed. There are a lot of pedestrians on there. There is a best stop, which is fairly heavily used right there in front of the Tire Store, and that's a major pedestrian passage through there, and cars do come off fairly quickly. Adding traffic there seems like a really bad idea in terms of traffic impacts and the impacts on the pedestrian corridor. You know, perhaps we could deal with something like that with a commitment to build a sidewalk, but since there's no sidewalk, the rest of Rosehill, that would be just a patch. Long-term, my, the other concern is, as you know, we get one shot at changing zoning. If Chapel Hill Tire decides to sell, all we've eliminated here are, you know, we're permanently changing this to commercial. The existing zoning is far more appropriate. It allows for more residences, which is what we really desperately need. So we keep filling up what we have, and we're glad to have more neighbors, but this would actually reduce the number of residences that could be developed on that property, which I think would be an appropriate use. It is a nonconforming use. We do have tire stores. It's great to have a tire store in the neighborhood. We also have about 12 others. So it's not like we're hurting for tire services in the neighborhood. There are, literally about a dozen tire, tire and car repair businesses.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have someone that's on the phone. Please go ahead. Are they going to mute it? Press star nine to unmute yourself, please. Go ahead. I think you're unmuted.
Yes. Okay. My name is Clay Waters. I live at 1893 Terry Road. I am the senior pastor at Greystone Church in Durham, just directly across from Chapel Hill Tire. I was calling to put my support in for Chapel Hill Tire. We have lots of members who patronize the business, and I'm sure, as I would, and I've been a customer for many years, would appreciate being able to have a better place to wait for automobiles, as well as I've seen this growing community around the church, and to be able to serve more customers. So I am calling in much support of Chapel Hill Tire and their renovations.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would wish to speak? We have Joni Brown. Please unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Joni Brown, and I live at 3822 Alameda Street, not the area where Chapel Hill Tire is, but I am speaking in support of them. My husband, Branson, and I have lived in, lived in and served the Durham community for 44 years. I'm asking that you support this community-supported business that not only offers paid internship opportunities to area high schoolers, supports local organizations such as Special Olympics through fundraisers, pays for all-employee trainings and certifications to a high-quality car service, but also annually blesses 12 community members with $1,000 worth of car care service through their 12 Days of Kindness initiative. We're actually not customers of Chapel Hill Tire, but we would be if we already have a mechanic that we love. But we came to know this caring company because we were secretly nominated by a church friend and were one of those 12 people blessed last December by Chapel Hill Tire's annual 12 Days of Kindness. The Chapel Hill Tire went beyond the original $1,000 gift when they found out our check engine light was on, and it involved the catalytic converter, which we couldn't afford to replace at the moment. Chris and Colby knew from our nomination story that life was a bit financially challenging for us due to Branson's 33-year battle with Parkinson's. Colby decided to not only replace our front brakes, but also took care of the new catalytic converter, which cost at least $3,000 more than the allotted $1,000, and he refused to let me work out a payment plan to pay for the amount over the $1,000. He said, "No, we want to do this for you," and I cried. This is the caliber of people that we are talking about here in this community. Please do whatever you must to help this company magnify their customer service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak or in the galley? All right, hearing done. The public hearing is now closed, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and question. Commissioner Cutright.
Thanks, Chair. It sounds like Chapel Hill Tire is doing really good work in the community, and generally there's support primarily from customers. As I look at this list of signatures, I mean, I'm curious as to how many or what percentage are actually in the neighborhood. I don't know if you have that, Mr. Byker.
Yeah, ballpark Commissioner Cutright, I'd say out of the 280, 40 or 50 live in pretty close proximity, judging by the street addresses, so maybe was that, math is tricky for lawyers, 20%, 25%.
Appreciate that. You know, what strikes me is that it sounds like that you're a community staple and you're, you know, you're beloved, but there are some challenges, and I'd be curious if you've thought about ways to mitigate the noise. Have you thought about doing additional insulation in the new bays? You know, committing to some things that will help the neighborhood, but also allow you to get your project done, you know, something that you would normally do in your bays, but adding some additional noise insulation, things like that. To me, that's, to me, that's how you sort of push this forward and be a good, good community member, get what you want, and also just help alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors. I heard a concern about traffic. I don't, I don't really see that as an issue here, but I think the noise is real. You know, screwing tires with, with air guns is, it's a loud venture. So I think if you consider something like that, going above and beyond normal standards, you know, to me, I would support this.
We'll certainly look at that. Commissioner Cutright's a great suggestion, and again, I've been able to work with these folks. Maybe you and the Planning Commission perhaps remember the church conversion that we had a couple blocks over. That was maybe last year, so it's nice to see those folks again. We'll certainly look at that. And I do want to emphasize Chapel Hill Tire's business hours, they're from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, only Monday through Friday. They're completely closed on the weekends, but
I will add, Mr. Byker, that in this new world of work from home, that doesn't necessarily help.
Yeah, I understand, but like I said, I'm always the last to get the memo, so I haven't mastered the work from home yet, but the point is, we're happy to look at that and emphasize that we'll certainly evaluate everything we can do to minimize the noise impacts going forward.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Johnson?
I appreciated my fellow commissioners' question, but it still raises concern for me. Without something more substantive, then we'll look at it, because I, first of all, I applaud the community's support, and I heard that loud and clear. But what I also take away is a couple things. Based on the report I saw, the traffic impact is going to be 1,485 more vehicles in a 24-hour period. That was one thing that caught my eye. If you want to comment, that's fine, but that was in the report.
Berlin Thomas Transportation, that is based on the highest traffic generator for the zoning that would be approved. for the zoning that would be approved, not necessarily for what they're talking about doing, but there is no commitment to a specific use. So we always generate traffic based on what could go there.
Thank you for that. So my question then to the applicant is, how many more cars will this generate for your business on a weekly basis?
Ballpark, we estimate approximately ten percent more cars than are there today.
While you're up there, just a follow-up question, if I could. I've heard about parking in addition to on the lot on the adjacent street. Did I hear that correctly, and is that one of the issues that I heard the community raise about sort of overflow parking going on the street?
Yeah.
People waiting? Can you address that, please?
Sure, we'll, we'll reach out to, I mean, we could reach out to Greystone Church. Maybe it's possible for us to buy, because their parking lot's empty during the week. We don't have it? Okay. Okay, that was the former one, actually, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we think we're in good shape.
No parking on the street today, and it won't be in the future? Okay. On site?
Yep.
If I read the petition correctly, from the transportation, going back to that, had made a recommendation, a proffer that wasn't accepted, could the staff advise us as to what that was, the request, and then the applicant maybe can provide some context to that proffer?
Earlene Thomas Transportation, so anytime a development plan comes to us that's along a transit route, we do ask for that standard note for evaluation at the time of site plan to see if there are any transit improvements that could be made, such as a bus shelter to be proffered by the development.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. Yeah, we just started looking at that, Commissioner Johnson. It looks like it would cost twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to put in a bus shelter. We're going to look at that and consider it before we get to city council. I'm afraid we can't commit to it tonight, but we're evaluating it. I think there's a possibility that we could agree to it before it goes to city council, but we're looking at it. We just started collecting, contacting engineers to find out what it would cost, and that's what we're doing. But we'll have an answer for that before we get to city council.
Thank you. And my last question, really for the owners and continued a good work that the community, but this was a known issue at the time of purchase. It was nonconforming, purchased the property in May of twenty twenty-three. Now we're at this point where there's an opportunity to expand. I'm trying to connect the knowledge then to now and why we're here now with the noncompliance. Go ahead.
Yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner Johnson, this, this happens every day. My phone rings once, at least once a month, usually more than that, with people who've purchased property, bought a, it could be any type of structure. Then they find out what their expansion plans are or conversion plans are, are not allowed. There was some of a longer term, do you remember the substance abuse practitioner on Miami Boulevard? He bought a house on Miami Boulevard, ginormous, five-lane road. Well, it was zoned R twenty, so he couldn't do his substance abuse counseling in that building, even though it's on a five-lane road. So, yeah, it's unfortunate. It, it happened, but it, it happens probably every day, Commissioner Johnson, that folks buy, folks buy property, and unfortunately, these, these, these design districts are fairly hard to understand, so it's, it's not, is a fairly abstract concept, and unfortunately, it was not understood because the property had been used as a tire store since nineteen eighty-five.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Chair Shigeris.
For the applicant, um, is there any possibility of changing the location of the additional bays you want to put on so they would be facing forward, and then you could still go and park there, and then that would allow, alleviate the, the local community's concerns and allow for an, an expansion? I, I looked at it, it looks like probably you couldn't put two in there, but I bet you could put one and then still drive around and use your parking in the back triangle area.
Yeah, unfortunately, that gets to the problem with the, uh, uh, stream buffer that's on that side, so we don't want to im, im, drive activity towards that stream buffer. So, yeah, we looked at the same thing, Vice, Madam Vice Chair, thought about the same thing, but again, I'd be remiss if I did not point out Durham County Stormwater Division has already expressed their approval for the cleanup efforts that Chapel Hill Tire has undertaken in the past year, and unfortunately, you can't put more building towards the stream buffer. You have to do your best to minimize the impervious surface next to the stream buffer.
Commissioner Chakowski?
Uh, yes, is, I guess my question kind of boils down to, would the renovation move forward without the additional bays? Or is that a requirement?
I don't think so.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the, the cost of construction doesn't make it really feasible unless you upgrade the entire, entire building and, and increase the number of customers that can be served based on the outstanding track record Chapel Hill Tire has.
Thank you.
Appreciate that question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Are we ready to move this forward?
Chair, as it relates to case Z two four zero 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 one four Hillsborough Road Commercial, I make a recommendation that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move case Z twenty-four triple zero one four Hillsborough Road Commercial forward with a favorable recommendation to city council. May I have the roll call vote, please? Can you make me go last?
Do you want to go? Okay. Vice Chair Shigeris?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski?
No.
Commissioner Gregory?
Yes.
Commissioner Wen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Woke?
Yes.
Chair Cameron?
Uh, yes.
The motion passes six to three.
All right. See if we can get through this last one before seven thirty. All right, we now have the zoning map change case Z twenty-four triple zero twenty-three Vivo Living Ivy Creek. If you need to talk, please go outside while we still conduct, conduct business. Attorney Biker, please, y'all go outside.
Just to clarify, that is seven three, not six three.
What did I say? Oh, on the other thing.
On the other road, yes, it was six, seven, three.
All right, may we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Cameron. Members of the Commission, Aaron Kane with the Planning Department. Tarek Shire of the Urbanist Group Incorporated proposes to change the zoning designation of one parcel of land totaling three point five nine acres and located at nineteen twenty Ivy Creek Boulevard. The current zoning is commercial general with a development plan and office institutional with a development plan. The applicant proposes to change this designation through a textual development plan to Plan Development Residential thirty-five point six five four to allow up to one hundred and twenty-eight multifamily units. The properties are currently designated Transit Opportunity Area on the, and resi, and Recreation and Open Space on the Place Type map. The proposed Plan Development Residential thirty-five point six five four zoning is consistent with the designated place type. As shown on the zoning map, context map, the existing zoning is commercial general with a development plan and office institutional with a development plan. The site is surrounded by office institutional, commercial general, and commercial neighborhood. On the aerial map, you can see the general location of the site in southwestern Durham at the, basically at the, uh, go back to the, no worries. Basically, at the southeast corner of University Drive and MLK Boulevard, near Blue Cross Blue Shield Headquarters and the Harris Teeter on MLK. The properties are currently designated Transit Opportunity Area on the Place Type map. The proposed zoning was deemed, determined to be generally consistent with the place type. The proposal makes several textual commitments in excess of U D O five development ordinance requirements. The proposal includes commitments to twenty percent affordable housing, the construction of a bus pullout and pad or shelter subject to Go Durham determination, and a monetary contribution of ten thousand dollars each to Durham Public Schools and the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund. Two neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with U D O requirements, one on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and a final meeting on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The proposal seeks to convert a vacant property into one hundred and twenty-eight multifamily residential units. The proposal would involve the renovation and repurposing of an existing development that predates current project boundary buffers, open space, and tree coverage requirements. The textual development plan includes a commitment to allocate twenty percent of the units to be designated as affordable housing for households earning sixty percent or less of the area median income for a period of at least thirty years. Additionally, as mentioned previously, ten thousand dollar contributions would be made to the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund and Durham Public Schools. Again, the proposal is generally consistent with the place type designation of Transit Opportunity Area on the Place Type map. Staff and the applicant are here to answer questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. I believe the applicant is on Zoom. If we would unmute, please.
Good evening. This is Tarek Shire. Can you all hear me well?
We can hear you, ten minutes.
Excellent. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Tarek Shire with Urbanist Group. I'm a consultant to the ownership of Vivo Living, and I'm here tonight to present to you case number twenty-four zero 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 two three and request your support for our proposed project located at nineteen twenty Ivy Creek. You may recall that I came before you about a month ago and presented to you in September a, a similar, uh, case for textual zone change for a property located at forty-five one five North Carolina Highway fifty-five. My apology for not being there with my team in person. We will be back in the city next month as well for city council meetings, so, and, and we look forward to staying close to the city. I want to thank staff for their hard work and guidance and, and just reiterate how beneficial it's been working with them. Let me share with you this short presentation, and in the interest of not repeating what was presented last time, we, we changed the slides a bit to make sure that we address any questions you may have. Next slide, please. A little bit about Vivo. Again, it's in thirteen states, twenty-six Vivo communities. It's really a leader in attainable housing that's been converted from an extended state to multifamily, and our commitment to the state is seven communities and three communities within the city of Durham limit. One is currently in operation, a second one is in review that came before you last month, and this is our third, uh, project for, within the city. Next. Just a quick look at some of the communities that we are involved with throughout the U.S. Next sheet. And down at the bottom, you'll see the three Vivo locations in Durham. The first one is Guest Road, that's, that's the one that was approved a while back, and then the, the one in the middle is the one we came before you, and then tonight we're here for Ivy Creek. Next. And just a quick reminder about Vivo's approach. It really converts hotels to apartments, reduces the footprint, because we're really not building from ground up. We're, we're taking an existing asset, an existing building that is either underutilized or has, has not been operated to its full potential, and we renovated to provide attainable housing, and this housing is very often at eighty percent AMI, and it serves the community, including public safety personnel, teachers, nurses, civic employees, so on and so forth. Next page. Vivo is, is commits to the cities where they, they, they provide housing, where they have projects. We are committed to the city of Durham. We're here to stay, and this is a picture of, of the entire team getting involved with, with the cleanup of the, of the neighborhood on a cleanup day with the city, and we have all folks, including the chairman of the company and staff, doing good and doing right by the city. Next. This map shows specifically the three Durham properties, and I boxed in the subject property that we're here to talk about today, which is nineteen twenty Ivy Creek. And you could see from this map, the Durham Guest Road is all the way up north, and then subject is in the middle, and then the property we came and spoke to you about last month is all the way in the south. So we are, we're, we're in, in, in different places within Durham. We like the entire city, and we're committed to it fully. Next. Some of the key commitments that were mentioned by staff, I don't want to go through them in detail, but I just want to mention that we are providing twenty percent of the housing units, about twenty-five units, will be committed to households earning no more than sixty percent AMI, restricted for thirty years, and a one-time contribution to, to a dedicated housing fund that's on top of the twenty percent affordable housing. In addition to that, a ten thousand dollar one-time contribution to Durham Public School. Next. This is a, an image of the property itself. That's the, the office and some of the amenity space. On the right-hand side, you'll see just a, a brief description of what this property would include, which is a lobby clubhouse, a fitness center, laundry facilities on-site, high-speed Wi-Fi. That's all welcome on the property as well. And then we would have bike racks throughout. As far as amenities and what Vivo does, we really bring up the, the property to Vivo Living standards, so we would go inside and clean up the, the, the building, the units, and new, new carpet flooring, paint, and the good thing about this is, again, these units do have kitchenettes, so we really are minimizing the amount of carbon footprint demo and hauling and, and new construction, construction materials. We do bring this up to a Class A property. This is a quick slide, you can go next. This is a quick slide of, of who lives in, in our properties and age group. For, as far as occupation, it's really across the board, and as far as age group, it is also across the board with the exception of under eighteen years old, which was a topic of discussion last month when we present, presented the prior project. We do not see, although we welcome all ages, but we really do not see minors in moving into these units by virtue of, of just the size of the unit. Next. This is my contact along with my colleague, Payman Yozan Damar, he's with Vivo Living, and that concludes my presentation. Again, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your support, and we look forward to helping the city of Durham with its attainable housing and bring in much-needed affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the galley that would like to, do we have a sign up for this? None? All right. All right, there's no one pre-registered or signed up. Is there anyone in the galley that would like to speak to this case? Anyone on Zoom? Going once, going twice. All right, at this time, I'm closing the public hearing. We are now open for Commissioner discussions and questions. Commissioner Wen.
Yes, question for the applicant. I didn't think of this last time, but since you are, I think you called it converting old structures that may have environmental contaminants or stuff, could you walk me through your process for searching for things like asbestos and things like that? And if it is found, what is your protocol for addressing that in these buildings?
Commissioner, thanks for the question. I didn't mention that there is any asbestos or contamination. On the contrary, these, these buildings are, they are built way past that date. They were built in the 90s. What I'm suggesting is they, as an extended stay hotel, they have outlived their use. And they're not running to their full potential. So we have an opportunity to go in and repurpose the building without having to demolish and add to the carbon footprint. That's really what I meant. So if, if that was misunderstood, that's not the intent.
All right, appreciate the clarification.
No worries.
Anyone else? Commissioner Johnson.
If I could just follow up on that question, because maybe I heard it differently. I thought it was a good question. You're going to use the same footprint I got it and remodel. But whenever you get into older buildings, there are always that potential for environmental realities. How, the question I heard was how will you identify those? And what's your mitigation plan if it comes up?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. We, let me clarify that this, these buildings, and this one specifically, I believe, was built, I want to say 1993, which is way past that lead-based paint and asbestos use in, in such buildings. So the, 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 the question itself, the structure of the question is truly not applicable to, to this building. Had it been a building that was built in the 60s or 70s, I think that, that question would be extremely irrelevant. In this case, I don't believe it's applicable.
Okay, well, mold and milder, there are other factors that will come in with older buildings, not just asbestos. My, my one question, and again, I remember you sitting in front of us, and it's a great project with a lot of good positives to it. It's first of all, a question for staff in terms of, again, the school impact. If I read the, the document correctly, and then I'm reconciling to less than 3% under 18. The estimate was a 49 student impact, which would translate into a lot of extra costs on schools that are at, basically all three that are at 100% capacity.
So something we're actually, this is a good lead into something we're actually going to talk about in our retreat after this case, is that we do have some updated numbers from Durham Public Schools that were received in the last few weeks. And your staff report starting next month, we didn't get them in time for this month's reports, but your staff for next month will start seeing those new numbers. And so we'll talk about that during the retreat. When we do our, when we do our estimates, they are based on a formula just based on the type of unit and the general generation from that type of unit. It can't be specific to one particular developer or one particular project. So the number of students that you would have seen in the staff report would have been our estimation of generally what 128 multifamily units would be, not necessarily this development of 128 units.
Perfect, thank you. For the applicant, can you clarify, are any, we, I think I asked his question at the last project you presented. Are there any family units or multiple bedroom units that are going to be in this plan?
Commissioner, the, this building consists mostly of the same size unit throughout. There is, I believe there's one or, or two, or maybe a couple of units that are larger. I don't know exactly the number, Mr. Commissioner, I don't want to mislead you with it, but I, I do know, for instance, the manager's unit is typically a, a two-bedroom. One bedroom is, is converted to an office. The other bedroom is actually the, the sleeping corridor. So I hope that answers your question.
No, no, it did. It's more of clarification. My last question is concerning traffic impact, either on the immediate access or Martin Luther King with this coming into play. Are you planning to make any modifications to the transportation flow with the Durham? Or has that come out on the plate yet?
Commissioner, we did have a pre-application meeting and then a pre-development meeting with staff. And we had transportation there. We have spoken with, with Arlene as well, who's, who's there tonight. Traffic issues or mitigation thereof did not really come up to, to an extent that, that, that I, I could remember off the top of my head.
And I think the staff is agreeing with you, so thank you. That's it, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we ready to move this case forward?
Chair, as it relates to case Z200023 Vivo Living Ivy Creek, make a motion that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright, seconded by Commissioner Williams to move cases Z240023 Vivo Living Ivy Creek forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mackiver.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're now moving to committee updates. Don't think we have any, nope. All right, moving to new business, we have all Commissioners reset the 2025 meeting schedule. I believe there's one item that we need to vote on, on that meeting schedule.
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to need to beg the commissions pardon on this. There was one thing that we missed later after the agenda had gone out. November 11th, 2025 is the second Tuesday of November next year, however, that is Veterans Day. As we want to honor our veterans, and we would not be meeting that day. So my recommendation to the commission, but it is up to you. We can either meet the day after, Wednesday, November 12th, or we can meet the week before, which would be Tuesday, November 4th. Staff does not have a preference, that's, that's really what works best for you, or if there's another day, but, but those are two suggestions that staff has to move that.
Yeah, that's Election Day the week before. There should be some midterm elections.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. So I would suggest then, that's correct.
Next, the next, that Wednesday.
We'll have some, we'll have local elections that day. So my suggestion then would be to move it to Wednesday, November 12th. And we'll make sure the chamber is available that day.
All right, do we have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move the November 2025 meeting to Wednesday, November 12th.
Can I, actually, we need you to approve, vote and approve the meeting schedule. So I would ask that you make the motion to approve the meeting schedule with the one change for November.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Planning Commission meeting schedule, noting the change from November 11th, 2025 to Wednesday, November 12th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the meeting schedule for 2025 with the noted meeting change in November to meet the second Wednesday of the month instead of the second Tuesday of the month. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now, we are not adjourned, but we are going into our annual retreat. The retreat is open for the public to attend if they would like, but is not open for public comment. We will now move over into the room for our retreat. No.